To all your insurance needs, home, auto, life, health, or commercial, contact Peggy J. King Insurance Incorporated at 205-921-1616. Or stop by the office located at 370 Bexar Avenue West in Hamilton, Alabama, right next to the Clydeknex Public Library. Peggy J. King Insurance, where everybody is somebody special.
Lord, we come to you this morning seeking your guidance. Lord, we always realize that we are unable to do the things that are right without your help. We pray, Lord, for each constituent of this county. And we pray, Lord, that we might seek your help in doing the things that will be right and helping them to have a better life. We pray to thank you, Lord, for those people who are serving in foreign and domestic lands to protect our freedoms. We know, Lord, that there's bad and evil things going on over in the Middle East. And we pray that we might seek your guidance in handling these things. Best you go with us now and do the best viability by seeking your help, Lord. Go with us and forgive the warfare of these things. That's my name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Without motion, we approve the minutes which was read and signed. I'll make a motion second.
I'll second.
All of y'all say aye.
Aye.
Foes likewise. Well, we've got a copy in front of us here of the budget of coming year. Is there any comments or questions we might, uh, approach, might enlighten us on?
What's our total, ma'am?
We're expecting a total of $557,022,092 to the surplus.
And what were the cushions in the budget for coming year? And this kind of a $400,000 thing?
Yeah.
Like motion approved, eh?
We got a motion to approve it. Uh, second.
I'll make a second.
And we got a second. Sure. Any discussion? All of the papers say aye.
Aye.
Foes likewise. The other sheet on files concerning, uh, whereas pro bono, we will feature legal aid clinics throughout the state to help people who needly, who greatly need legal assistance become a forward that we have our lawyer and accountant provide a legal, free legal service for all these people. So y'all give me a, uh, a motion second, sign this proclamation.
Motion to this proclamation.
And I'll second.
Okay, you got a, uh, second off the first say aye.
Aye.
Uh, those opposed likewise. We would need to go into executive session this time, but, uh, man, I'm not here to be, need to wait, uh, sign bills till that point in time that EMA may get here, uh, let's try. We got a few bills here to sign, let's do that, uh, that's the time when he gets here. We'll do the second.
Uh, we got much more than that.
I'll have it. Of all the elections we got coming up, I don't understand why we haven't won election for that amendment. That's absolute waste of taxpayers' money.
Sure is. It's three million dollars.
Now, I'm talking about to vote on it.
That's what it costs. You don't have to make a list.
The figures from the state was we can cost $3 million to have an election.
Really?
Yeah.
Coming up, that's $36,000.
It's always true, next one.
Yes, yeah. Plus leave.
Is our EMA director just coming? He won't stay. Mr. Chairman, did he ever show up?
Yeah.
Oh, very good.
I want to get closer for the water. We're all looking.
Sleeps out here. I heard a story about.
Motorcycle. I'm here on corner.
Drug test for a motorcycle?
Yeah, we're right there.
They've seen the, uh, hurt bad motorcycle, red.
Do they?
Took one of his legs off. There he seems, Bill.
Right there.
Said the man had taken on him off another truck.
Who was that?
It was Winfield.
Winfield.
I turned around, talked about that, I said, we rent the truck. Truck, I'll turn it off in front of there. So never anything else, perhaps?
I always remember I liked the bed, but almost broke his neck, you know, when I four wheeled. Four wheeled years ago.
There's a woman, there's a guy who walked in front of Jerry Fucker, we hit a tape, burnt her up. I like the pedal a little. Oh.
Yeah, I heard that, too.
True, much shorter.
Speaking of.
There he is right there.
Come on. Let it hit us up. Hit it up. Come on. I don't mind taking it anywhere that does.
True.
I don't.
I like it. Just take my pill. I have to count if you don't miss it. Won't come up missing. He gonna have to take supper.
He gonna have to see that later.
Well, uh.
If he keeps too close to an island town, I'm gonna tell you.
Say five off sale, boy.
Yeah.
We need to take a few minutes this morning to go an executive session, uh, for the person of having these words discussed.
That's the good name character.
Good name character. About, uh, 30 minutes or less, I'm sure that'd be enough time. So we will go an executive session this time. Let's just go next door.
Any motion?
Uh, yeah, we got a motion.
Not second.
All right, got a motion second. All of y'all say aye.
Aye.
Go excuse us for a minute. You need a motion, I hear you come out. I need a motion second to, uh, executive session.
How about the motion?
The motion I did second, I say second. All of y'all say aye. Foes likewise. And now it's time, uh, 10 o'clock, and, uh, I would be at openings on, uh, several different things here. I have, Mike could have one here on crushed limestone, if you have a question.
I hope you got more than one, eh?
Yeah, yeah, we wish we had a new table for ladies, uh.
You want to sit at, sit up near Mike's place, Mike, where you got a table in front of you.
Sit up where the big boys are.
Mike's, uh, Mike's chair.
By the way, Mike is in, has doctor's form today, so he's having kid's tongue problem.
Of him?
Yeah.
He's got a big head.
Yeah.
Never had one.
I guess.
I have.
That wasn't fun for them.
But you don't take, I didn't say a brother, like, that happened.
You give your, uh, you notice you give one.
I didn't have a heart, no. I mean, that's as bad a pain as it can be. My wife was rocking me to the doctor, one night at Norfolk, coming around the curb and down that hill, and I said, hey, the pass that truck, two o'clock in the morning, I said, hey, the pass that truck, I'm dropping out.
She wouldn't ask you to drive it.
Huh? She said it don't have a way.
I ain't gonna deal my thing.
She said it don't.
You didn't, so she left.
I didn't, so she left.
This alley, if you'll notice while I, it's not right these days, we have, we're coming to bed, we got special meeting, uh, September 26th. What day is, uh? In two minutes, you know? What is it?
Is this the 16th?
Yeah, that's 10 days.
Two days, we got flu shots.
No, eighteen, yeah.
That's too hard.
Huh? Oh, is it?
All the flu shots to be given.
They're gonna be in the conference room by the elevator. This is the way I'm.
First all four of them, three of them all four of them.
This is the one that says, there should be another round later on this year for the county.
This is for law?
This is the one where they go to where she would set up this estate, but the county employees can get, that there should be another round, and they will rest the county.
Ever have one? Had one, it made me sick. Absolutely.
Okay, we'll, we'll open the first bid, um, for gasoline and diesel fuel. Hamilton Petroleum Incorporated. Don't believe them.
Well, this is one, how much time do you think it takes to decipher it?
Anybody here from Hamilton Petroleum or want to read? I, I'll just open if you want me to, Mr. Chairman. If anybody here wants me to read them, I'll get them to read them. Next bid, Moore Petroleum Company Incorporated, Winfield, Alabama.
Is this for our gas?
Yes, uh, long road base fuel and gasoline. We have two bids. Two biden.
Look what we got, didn't we?
I didn't see it. I sure didn't, unless it's, unless it's down here in some of these others.
Are you on?
If we run, if we run across it, I'll, we'll, so.
That's a varnished. Been stained truck.
Yeah.
Okay, next bid, signs, aluminum blanks. GTO Supply Company Incorporated.
Don't cut yourself, but.
There you are. GC, same one, like, low rates. We used to have the library. Hall signs, anybody want me to read the sign bill?
No.
Who's that one from?
Hall signs.
They're all.
Hall signs. From. Bloomington, Indiana. No bid, they no bid. Traffic signs, Jacksonville, Alabama.
You didn't tell me that much, huh?
No, I'm trying to be careful with it.
They won't cut you, don't worry about it.
Traffic signs. Okay, those are all the vehicle signs. Okay, these are the plastic pipe bids. First bid, Harvey Culvert Company Incorporated. Y'all, anybody want to hear about the big bids? No bids. Next bid, J.G. Culvert.
That Harvard, does that have a code?
I believe it is. It's Cleveland, Alabama, it's over there near Culver. That's J.G.'s bid. That's the metal pilot piece. And those are the plastic pipe bids, now the metal pipe bids. We got first bids, uh, J.G. Culvert, Cleveland, Alabama.
This is metal.
This is metal. Harvey Culvert Incorporated, Cleveland, Alabama.
So it's not a, or you can't get it, I get the whole load, or?
Yeah, Harvey, sometimes he'll put a stipulation in there. Of course, if he does that, then, then we don't do that, then that would be reason to, to, Harvey Culvert Incorporated. Well, this one, this one may be a metal pipe bid, it's from Contag.
Build metal, we'll have traffic.
Let's say, uh.
Can you, well, this is German, we don't have one.
Yeah.
Our lawyers will say I'm a real traffic, you know, give a hand. Offer this right there, just to see. I could blow the pipe for a traffic, get help with it.
Metal pipes, contact construction.
Contact?
Contact.
Next bid will be Culverx. First bid, Dunn Construction Company, Birmingham.
They don't make old names out here.
That's the one.
Well, I'm done.
Amen. And what we get there is that, best we've ever had. What's the next bid? Next bid, Advanced Asphalt Products, that's who we're getting from back here.
It is.
Advanced Asphalt Products. Next bid, Wiregrass Construction Company Incorporated, Trinity, Alabama. Don't lose here.
We want repower of the past.
Those are all Culverx companies. Crush Limestone. Y'all just wanted to look at them, you don't believe them.
Cause these little names dealing here. What are y'all here for?
Crush limestone.
Okay, so.
Six or seven crushed diamond.
Yes, yes, it's the all crush limestone. Rogers Group Incorporated.
What is that?
It's you. Y'all, y'all want me to read it, y'all? Okay, FOB plant size, size A, $11. Size B, $10.50. Size C, $12.50. Size D, $11.25. Size E, $9.25. Size F, $10. Delivered to Marion County. Size A, $19. Size B, $18.50. Size C, $21.50, eight, I believe. Size D, $19.25. Size E, $21.25. Size F, $18.10, Rogers Group Incorporated, Tuscon, Alabama. Next bid, Vulcan Materials. Tuscon, yeah. Size A, $9.50. Size B, $8.75. Size C, $9.75. Size D, $9.75. Size E, no bid. Size F, $8.25. Delivered Marion County. Size A, $17. Size B, $16.25. Size C, $18.50. Size D, $17.29. Size E, no bid. Size F, $15.75. That's the call.
What says that, no bid? Flag, that's a flag. Marked flag.
Is that a good bid? Three quarters, right?
Marked flag.
So that's the crushed diamond, yeah?
Here's MK materials.
But you didn't bid it.
What is the flag, the steel flag?
Yeah.
MK materials. Size A. Is that $9.25?
I don't believe that.
$9.25. Size B, $8.25. Size C, $9.25. Size D, $9.50. Size E, no bid. Size F, $7.75. Marion, delivered to Marion County. Size A, $17.50. Size B, $16.50. Size C, $17.50. Size D, $17.75. Size Z, no bid. Size F, $15.75. What's on the bid?
Is that about five or six dollars a ton of hollies? Or that, so... Couple of eight dollars, so...
Okay, next, we've got Crush Sandstone. We have one bid from Bun, S T Bun. Y'all want me to read these? Size A, no bid. Size B, eight fifty. Size C, thirteen. Size D, no bid. Size E, no bid. Size F, eight fifty. Delivered to Marion County. Size A, no bid. Size B, fourteen dollars. Size C, eighteen fifty. Size D, no bid. Size E, no bid. Size F, fourteen dollars.
They look the way the traffic gets, it's...
What is it?
Yeah, we did, we, we got some additional signs, side blanks, and, and, um... Little sign, sign posting, whatever.
What, uh, what is A, uh, what, what A is?
A's is your... One through ten stone. It's like your, um...
It's, it's them.
Yeah, sixes, fives, et cetera. Your, um, paving stones, number seven, eight is that D. All these signs.
Is that all your aggregates, Mark?
Yes, yes.
Appreciate it. Thank you, very good. Oh, have a good day. We'll let you know soon.
Here's a, a sign from G and C Supply, this is a sign bid that we didn't get in the first one. We get more bids on signs, we have a K one.
You have a K one?
You don't give one or two? Yeah, a K.
Where do they have a K button?
Uh, we're gonna Tuscon, yeah. Well, they got it. Yeah, the, the...
Him with that gun.
That's custom products. Next bid is Traffic Strapping. Here we do, and it's, we did, I grew a...
They won't bid for the road.
Peak Pavement Markings.
Peaks?
Peak.
Took something out, threw it in the lab, but...
Ozark Strapping.
They're pretty good.
Yeah, Ozark was one of them.
Maybe ninety percent of the same, or... I'd be like that in Mac, they hard, CD hard, they strip them straight down behind the airport.
Yeah.
That often been, I ever seen.
Those are all the bids, Mr. Chairman, I recommend our team to review the bids and make the recommendations next meeting.
I will make recommendations, next bid, the next meeting, and, and contact, uh, the winners of the bid, so... So, all favor, let, uh, give discretion, the best bid awarded to the going responsible bidder.
I like the motion.
Second.
I'll say.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like that.
Make the motion, is it Darren?
Sir. We got, uh, sign leaves.
We got sign leaves, yeah.
Well, uh...
Being heavy, believe.
Well, I found, we signed deals, I... I, your motion, Mr. Chair? We got, uh, second.
I'll second.
All favor say aye. We're just down, Chair.